Bring the light.
Top five, things in trouble. And I was like, there's no one gonna make it.
Like a personal man.
We should do it at the same time, know that we can see each other.
I was like this.
It's a great setup. We're just in the center group.
Here we go.
Wheels up.
Ready?
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' work session, October 16, 2025. First, we will need the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion is there, second?
We need to amend the agenda to remove item 3B, the Five County Stadium.
All righty. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, motion passes. Thank you. Christmas Parade update.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board. We just wanted to briefly provide you an update, but also request action in order for us to proceed with the Christmas Parade. We have, we had updated you that we were working with Greater Raleigh Merchants Association for them to be able to take over the production of the Christmas Parade in Zebulon, and we have since contracted with them, and they have been hard at work at putting things together. They have launched a section on their website for the Zebulon Christmas Parade. Registration is open, so we encourage anybody that's interested in being a part of the parade that they go to the Greater Raleigh Merchants Association website in order to get registered, and we look forward to having a great time. We are moving forward with the parade on December 14th, slight change from 2 o'clock to 3 o'clock, and part of us wanting to do that is maybe to get out of some of the church traffic that we experienced on top of a lot of that generation of parade traffic. So we're hoping just a little bit, starting a little bit later, will help us some with that. We are requesting that the board authorize Resolution 2026-11, which would allow us to close streets that are needed in our downtown area so that we can safely operate the parade. Resolution 2026-11 is in your packet. I'm available to answer additional questions or go over anything in greater detail if you would like, whatever you need from me to do from here.
Comments from the board?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Sheila, thank you for the "It Is Launched." I've had a few people that have reached out and said that they have already registered to be a part of the parade, and I may have missed this in the conversation. How will we participate in the parade as far as the six of us, yes, asking you guys? Or how do we, or have we discussed that? I don't know if it's been a topic of conversation as of yet.
I'm going to be stilting the parade in a Grinch costume. You can join me.
Can't do that with you? All right, no, I'm good, I'm good. Yeah, I'm good on that.
Make a motion to deny that.
All right, well, I guess we can just talk about it at some point and come up with a plan. Because I know one year we all rode in like separate cars, and one year we rode in a float, so I just don't want us to wait in case we need to prepare for how we want to participate in that.
Question for the Merchants Association?
It, I've talked with them about it, and I think the, really the two main options are, do you want to ride separately or together? And that, if we can get that direction, do you want to have individual representation and you handle, you know, your own float or your own vehicle? Or do you want to be together? If you want to be together, then the question would lead to, do you want to do a homemade float? Or do you want to rent a professional float?
We're running out of time, so.
You're on stilts.
I'm on stilts, so it's not gonna make a difference for me. Six foot stilts.
Yeah, we ride together. I prefer us riding together.
I always like when we ride together.
So that's our answer, Sheila.
I'll just jog alongside on the stilts.
Yeah, just tilt in front of us.
Yep.
Or behind. If you, you're not, it's good.
All right, on the float.
Okay. What's your preference, Glenn? Together or separately? You want to be separate?
Glenn's riding by himself.
Together.
And just so that it's said here, because I think it's the appropriate time to, for anybody listening, the Greater Raleigh Merchants Association website to sign up for the parade is grma.org. G-R-M-A dot O-R-G, and that's the Greater Raleigh Merchants Association. That's all I had.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Make a motion.
For the...
Resolution 2026-11.
We need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Harrison? Commissioner Miles? Commissioner Baxter? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, strategic plan grant?
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, we started the fiscal year 2025 budget planning process with some discussion about the nonprofit grants and how we could better serve our nonprofit community. We held meetings with them, got feedback, and we were working towards a process, developed a policy for your nonprofit grant after you increased funding from $5,000 to $25,000 for the support of our nonprofits, because as we know, we can't do all this work together. It takes the entire community, and it is very difficult for nonprofits to get a lot of good momentum going as they're serving in the community. And so just how we can all work together seemed to be, in summary, what we were looking to do is just how do we create that community and help support it through your strategic plan grants? You gave out your initial $5,000 that matched the previous years. Historically, you gave out $5,000, so that process was already in place when we decided to move forward with an increased amount and adopted a policy. So that left you with $20,000 to distribute. We put out the application process that had, the decision for that had to be delayed because of some transitions and having to prioritize your budget, and so we're excited to have that back in front of you. We did have a grant review committee that evaluated the applicants, and you had 16 total. So I'm gonna back up just one second before I talk about the applications, make sure I hit everything. Yes, one of the key points of the grants that I didn't mention in my spiel before was that, the expectation was that the grant submissions and the work of the grant aligned with the town strategic plan or other town initiatives. We did have 16 applicants, varying interests, varying projects, some that we are familiar with in this community, some applications we've not received, applications from before. We did see a good increase in applications versus when we went through the $5,000 process. So I do think that is from the increased amount, because it does take time and labor to go through the process of applying for a grant, and at the end of the day, $1,000 isn't more than likely making a difference on whether or not you can move forward with the program. So we will, we have a packet for you on your way out, or I can give you here just in a minute, that has every single application in its entirety. I think we would be here for a while if I went through every single one here, but I want to make sure that you have time with each application before you make a decision on November 3rd, if that's what y'all choose to move forward with. And next, I'm gonna talk about the review committee. So the Board of Commissioners had an opportunity to recommend someone to serve on the event committee. They offered individual reviews. They were blind reviews, so all information, the name of the organization, or the name of, like, the executive director or the owner or whatever that may be, those, that information was removed. Now, granted, some of them you could probably figure out based on the types of programs that they offer, if you're familiar with Zebulon, but generally speaking, it was a blind process. And so one thing for you to take into consideration when you look at the review committee is that they did have a blind process. So you're gonna have information that they didn't necessarily have, and so they are going, they evaluated everything consistently. They came together as a group and discussed their individual reviews and had consensus of their recommendation. And the, they provided a recommendation based on their group discussion that considered total points. They even evaluated requests that included ineligible expenses. So we did have some that were like personnel or maintenance related that were submitted, and so those have been noted on the spreadsheet for you that they were ineligible expenses. And they also considered feasibility in whether or not they felt that it was, you know, realistic that this project could be done in the way that it was presented or within the timeframe presented. There was also some consideration on, is this the role of the town versus is there another organ or government institution that could probably better fit through a grant process for something like this? And then just the overall project impact was how they made their recommendation. So the review committee, the numbers, I'm gonna give you the numbers because that's all they saw. They, to this day, still not seen who they recommended funding for because it was a blind process. So they came up with two for the $5,000 grant, so that was Grant Six and Grant Five. They had a runner-up that they left at 16, and then 2,000 was seven, 15, two, three, and nine, with a runner-up being 11. So here's where I tell you who those were. The $5,000 was Application Six, and so that was the Zebulon United Methodist Church, and Application Five was the Boys and Girls Club. In the $2,000 grant category, Operation Restoration, Herbivore, the Knightdale Wake Forest Education Foundation, the Zebulon Downtown Arts Council, and the Zebulon Aggies Football and Cheer. Your runners-up in both categories were the James Earl Shepherd Alumni and Preservation Zebulon. The next steps are to view the online hub. So I'm gonna give you the print applications tonight, but at your request, you wanted all of the applications to be made available to the community as well as the videos that were submitted, and so all of that will be ready for the community to review tomorrow. So if you scan this and you pull it up, you might only see the applications right now. The videos will be up tomorrow, and you have consideration on November 3rd. So in the meantime, do you have any questions? Do you want to go ahead and see the applications to look at the packet? Or do you just want to take them on your way out?
I'd rather take it on the way out.
Yeah, it's a lot of information, so it's 16 of them, so.
And then the QR code has the applications.
The QR code takes you to public input. There was a landing page for our grant process, and so the first tab on that website will give you background about the grant. The second tab will give you the list of applicants, their application, and it will have the video loaded tomorrow morning. And I believe that QR code will actually take you directly to the second tab.
Any questions, comments on the board?
No, but thank you for getting that ball rolling with that selection committee, and to the selection committee out there, thank you for your time and your effort and your thoughtful review of the applications.
Do we have a paper with the list, the people that receive it? Is that in our packet too as well, with the list that you just showed?
Yes, it's in the...
Oh, it's that in there?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. The, there's a cover sheet for all of the applicant. There's a, in your packet of applications, there is a cover sheet, and it lists every single applicant, the amount they requested. I noted that we verify what their EIN number is in case you wanted to verify it, but that we did check it, as well as if there were ineligible expenses, what they were. And then we included the chart of what the committee recommended. Absolutely.
Any other? Oh, go ahead.
So this will come back before you at November, on the November 3rd to have discussion and award. At that meeting, I'll also, if you want to take a minute to give me any feedback, I got great feedback from the review committee. They really liked the process, and I mean, there's some things that I would change in the application to make my end better. Just things like, don't use your, the name of your organization in your description. Yeah, and then I don't have to go on a...
Bunch of redacted.
Yeah. But outside of that, if in this process there are any changes you want to make or any recommendations that you have, because if we follow previous discussion, we would be looking to release this year's grant process in November to collect applications.
Will you have the different recommendations and the changes for us, or you just know what you want to change?
It's not for the policy side. It's really just administrative changes in the application that I don't, I mean, I could bore y'all with it if you wanted me to, but it's really just literally things like, don't put your name in the description.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I defer, I'm gonna actually defer to our town attorney, Mr. Varnan, to walk us through the contract extensions. But before he does that, so you've got two contract extension requests in front of you tonight. One is for our interim town clerk. Our current contract comes to an end on October 25th. Because your next board meeting is not until November 3rd, that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. We know that you have interviews ongoing with potential clerks, but it's, if you don't rush the process, you may not necessarily have a clerk by October 25th. But what we're asking for is to extend it to December 31st. So that way, even if you do have a clerk on board, there will be handoff, smooth transition between the interim town clerk and a new town clerk if you do have one. So that's a request, and I think that our town attorney will help us work through that. The second contract extension request is for myself, the interim town manager. Even though my contract ends on November 7, we wanted to bring both of them to you tonight rather than come back on November 3rd for that. And so that's why we're bringing both contracts to you tonight.
Thank you. The two contracts that manager is discussing have expiration periods, and those expiration periods are described as the earlier of a date certain, which in the clerk's case is December, no, October 31st, and in the case of the manager is November 7th. But it's the earlier of those dates or the date that a permanent clerk or manager is hired. And what the manager is suggesting is that we need to have a modification that would allow both the current interim manager and the current interim clerk agree to a contract to provide transition services. So there's a 30, 45-day period where there's reason to believe that the new manager and the new clerk might need some help. And so that's, that's what the manager is suggesting, and it sounds like a good idea to me. Now, obviously, during this transition, the interim manager will no longer be the interim manager. He will be providing assistance to the new manager. The clerk would be the same way, no longer interim clerk. They would just be contract employees that would come in and provide assistance on an as-needed basis, if I understand correctly. Am I describing that right? Yes. There you have it. So, yes, ma'am.
And so the rates would remain the same that are currently in the contractors, not going to... not going to be any adjustments to the rates, we're just doing an extension. And with the understanding that it could run into a contracted situation once we hire the positions?
That's correct.
Okay, cool.
That's exactly right. And since we don't know when we'll hire somebody, it's not appropriate to bring that transition agreement to you now.
Right.
We're gonna go ahead and enter into the extensions, and once we have somebody in place, then that date will dictate how long the transition period will extend.
Awesome, thank you, Eric.
Any other questions?
So, we would extend his, I know we mentioned hers would be till December 31st, the same thing with the town manager?
No, the town manager's extension will be to January 7th.
January 7th.
To get you past the board meeting.
Also, part of that consideration for both myself and the interim town clerk is that, you know, we're gonna be in election in another three weeks or so, but we want to see if we could have some onboarding session with commissioners in December, if possible. So whether you have a clerk in place, permanent or manager permanent, it's still something that you're gonna need to onboard new commissioners and current commissioners. So, with this extension will allow both of us to plan for that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you. We need a motion on two separate contracts, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend, start with the town manager first, for his contract?
January 7th.
Till January 7th.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Need discussion? Roll vote, Commissioner Baxter?
In favor.
Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Smith?
Favor.
Commissioner Davis. Motion passes. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend the contract for our interim town manager until...
No, town clerk.
Town clerk, what did I say, manager? Town clerk until December 31st.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll vote, Commissioner Davis?
Favor.
Commissioner Smith?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Baxter?
Favor.
Motion passes, thank you. Next on the agenda is...
So, our style of beforehand of the show, so while the title says Zebulon Community Park, what we really want to talk to you about is how we implement our Play Zebulon vision, which includes the Zebulon Community Park, but you're also going to hear from her, the concept around Gil Street Park, as well as the conversations we had with you regarding Eastwick Academy. So, sure.
I'm gonna take us back to when we first adopted our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and that it is tied into the strategic plan and vision of the town. And so, our plan starts with what is the strategic plan for the town? What are our focus areas? And that's where we got that our vision for the Parks and Recreation Department is to create recreational and cultural opportunities that enhance quality of life and connect our residents through positive impacts on health and wellness, social interaction, economic growth, and environmental stewardship. And y'all have seen this chart plenty of times, but if you recall, our master plan also identifies goals for us, and I've shortened what they are into brief statements to look good on a chart. And you can see how they tie. Each one of these vision goals will tie to a focus area that we work towards. There's a lot of key action items in our plan. I've pulled out ones that kind of steer the conversation that we're having tonight. And act, key action items from the master plan were to prioritize adoption of plans for community park, to explore town-owned properties, to grow youth sports and teen opportunities, to coordinate with community partners, to generate economic impact, to make improvements to existing, and as well as to add additional athletic fields, preferably to consolidate them, and to look for multipurpose and tournament play opportunities. So we have three opportunities that we're gonna talk about this evening. We've been having conversation about the Gil Street Park expansion. There's town-owned property that's undeveloped. If you combine that with the current acreage of Gil Street Park, it's about 7.3 acres in total. We also have the Zebulon Community Park renovation effort that with recent land acquisitions and undeveloped, under, undeveloped areas, in total, we have 53 and a half acres to work with. In order to do some of the renovations that we're gonna talk about tonight, we'll need to look at a baseball, softball relocation and expansion, which is right along the avenue of, you know, tournament play, athletic fields. And we've entered into a letter of intent with Eastwick Academy to consider a joint use agreement. And there's approximately 18 acres of undeveloped area that directly connects to Gil, the Gil Street Park expansion. And as we look at all of the projects that we have going on and how to best serve our citizens, so we estimate that our current population is 13,766. This is a number we get from the planning department, from where they track what, you know, the census at a certain point said we were, but then also, how has our on-the-ground development been going? How have we been processing COs and what we truly believe on the ground our population is? In addition to that, there are approved 1,974 dwellings that are not, there are no COs yet for those. And there's another pending that have been approved but have not gone through the full planning process, 1,448 dwellings. And so, we, based on just that, if nothing else comes forward, there's no more plans, your estimate, estimated population growth would be about 9,513. So, if all of that were to get done, you're looking at a population just under 25,000. So, looking at how we can maximize our resources, and that's our goal, how can we serve our citizens, provide the resources that they're looking for, how can we be smart about how we use our tax dollars and get the most bang for our buck, but also have quality and it reflect the needs of our community? It's very important. So we do that by maximizing what we have, looking for strategic partnerships as well. So I'm gonna start with Gil Street Park. If, you know, we've been navigating some lead contamination at the existing park site, and we've had conversation about what development could occur on that site. And really, when we take a hard look at the land that it takes to build a really nice-sized neighborhood park and everything that we'd want to fit into it, it'd be hard to fit a lot of that onto the 1.6 acres that we had. Traditionally, a neighborhood park is gonna be three to five, four to six acres, somewhere in that range. And 1.6, we'd be cramming a lot into a small space, but we also are navigating issues with the lead contamination. And so, when we started looking at what the, the needs out of the park were and potential partnership opportunities, and going back to looking at what do we own as an organization already, we identified there was 5.7 acres at the border of the Eastwick Academy and the Zebulon Middle School properties that we already own, that is on the larger parcel that Gil Street Park currently sits on. And so, we can expand to this area, and it really will give us great, unique opportunities to partner with the two school properties, but also to build amenities that are more desirable. And it also opens up this unique opportunity, what do you do with the, the current Gil Street Park site? And when you're dealing with lead contamination, and we're still working with DEQ, and we'll have to go through that process and work with them through that, but you have a variety of options. You can, essentially, you can build up, you know, soil up over the lead contamination, and then you have to maintain it. You can dig it up and move it out and haul it off to another landfill site, or you can pave over it to cap it. And it got me thinking, what are, one, what does the community want? What do they show interest in? Do they want something more active? Do they want something more passive? We put a couple of options in front of the community, and we got an interest in that more active option. So, a skate park, we hear a lot about wanting to do things with teens, being right there with the two schools. It really seems like a, a good opportunity to leverage how we use this land and how we could utilize it to help serve our youth and to also take advantage of being closely located to those two schools. We are proposing in this site funnel concept plan for Gil Street Park to have a small community building, playground, a multipurpose squirt, court, sport court, picnic shelters, disc golf, walking trails, of course, parking will be part of it and just general open Anybody have any questions about Gil Street Park?
Any questions, comments from the board?
I'm excited about Gil Street Park. I think it's gonna be awesome.
Yeah. I really enjoy, I like Gil Street Park a lot, and so I really enjoy seeing this come together. And, and we had a lot of great, positive feedback at the Back to School Bash we did in that neighborhood, so I really think that it will be well-received, and it's something we will need for years to come. That small community building is gonna help us substantially serve the community.
And are we also continuing to have conversations with Mountain Zion to ensure that we continue building our partnership with them and the community?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Absolutely.
I know a while back in the budget, we approved money for, to go towards Gil Street Park. How would that funding be used? I mean, did we bring that funding forward to use for this project, or how does that look? I know we approved like 500,000.
So that funding is in a capital fund for Gil Street Park. So it's, it's there to help start whatever the plan is. So my recommendation, and I believe what we discussed then was, that would be, the funding that's there is going to be a great start to start your designs. Go ahead and get that moving, get closer to being shovel-ready, also to leverage it to go after grant funding. I think this is a great project to look for state allocation. Federal allocation might be a challenge, but a state allocation, there's a Part F Fund. The, the Part F Fund is a, is what funds the, the state parks. There, there's also the competitive grant. But sometimes there's also allocations in there where they don't go through the competitive process. And so, I think a lot of the thing, the pieces that we're pulling together, the association with the school, navigating the land contamination, I think there's a, a lot of really interesting components that would make this project very prime for grant opportunities, allocation consideration, bring in some partners. But the first step to be able to do that is to have the, a plan adopted.
Have these site plans been presented to the community itself, or what is the feedback?
Yeah, so we did, we had an online virtual workshop, and we also went to the community. We had, at, we were set up at the Back to School Bash across from Gil Street Park, and we sent postcards out to our neighbors of Gil Street Park.
Was this also at the coat drive? Did you have this, is this what was displayed? I can't remember.
Um, no, this one was not at the, the coat drive. We, we did this plan at the Back to School Bash.
There were a lot of...
We had, I think 130 people come through.
Coat drive, just a fresher reminder?
No, we were already in the, the finalizing, the, the plan phase for this one. So, I'm gonna move to our next one unless you have...
Thank you.
Yeah, so...
Shoot, can you go back? That one to... Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. So I wanted to start with Gil Street Park, because that's a plan that we've been working on, and it does fold into some of the, the other discussions. But as we continue to work through this process of what our community needs, how do we best serve our community, we really look at what are those facility needs? So then we could identify the property that we need. And so, we need at least four soccer fields. Soccer field, we say soccer fields, they will be multipurpose. You'll be able to use them for more than just soccer, as long as you have the capacity for it and the ability to maintain it. Baseball and softball fields, having two more. And the reason why we say four, and, you know, two more would give us a will of four, if you want to be attractive, as our master plan is seeking to offer some tournament location, which will then in turn support your economic development, you need at least four fields in a single location to really, we, we get some tournament play right now having our, our sites split, but it's not, they're different tournaments. We would be more attractive if we had four in a single location. We get a ton of requests for pickleball courts and splash pads. We've had a lot of recent conversation about community gardens. I get a lot of interest in dog park. We've had interest in the amphitheater since the adoption of the master plan, and we're really gonna need a multipurpose rec center that is much larger than the current community center. You know, we can, we can get by for now with community partners, but there will come a, a day where you really need to be investing in that multipurpose recreation facility. And so, that led us to looking hard at community park and considering whether or not we could maximize the use of the property, still maintain a lot of nature space too. But how could we really let this be an anchor for our community beyond what it already is? So when we started looking at the current layout and how we could shift things around and what we can maximize, and then we're also looking at, we're not in this alone. We're not gonna be able to do it alone. And so, we have to be conscious as we develop these plans, and we have to balance it. What are our needs? What are our community needs? What are our desires? What are our goals? But also, what are the potential funding avenues? And what are those potential partners that we could seek to come and be a part of this and invest in these types of facilities in our community to get us what we're looking for? And so, that leads to trying, going back to trying to consolidate these athletic field spaces and community park. We looked at, you know, do you put your four wheels of baseball or your four soccer fields here? And just based on space layout, you need, we strongly feel soccer is your best option, especially when you consider future funding streams, future use, the exponential growth we're seeing in soccer, you're gonna need this a lot sooner than... we're seeing in soccer, you're gonna need this a lot sooner than from just a programming standpoint than you will a wheel for your baseball. And we were able to fit the expanded community center, a larger playground, a splash pad, community garden, basketball court, an amphitheater slash softball stadium. So it'll be something very unique, but very cool. I mean, I don't know anybody else around that does it.
Have you seen it before? Because it seems like it would be very problematic in multiple ways. So I would love to have more of a conversation about this because when you talk about like there's not gonna be a stage, there are field use and damage considerations.
There would be a stage. There's a, there's a lot of ways to make it work. It's all in how you design it and we would navigate that through the design process. I mean, there's ways that you can have temporary nets that go, I mean, they do it for soccer all the time.
Do you have an example of what you're thinking of?
I, I have seen like stories over time of somewhat similar activities, but if you can go back, go back to thinking about, I'm gonna say for example, Five County Stadium. We're having discussions about how you have a stadium and you wanna use it for concerts and you wanna use it for movie nights and you wanna use it for a lot of these things. So it's a smaller version of something similar. But you'll, you'll be able to uniquely design the staging area behind where home plate would be and it's creativity. I think it'll be something unique that others don't necessarily have, but we have time to figure out what that design would be and to navigate whatever the concerns we have for that.
Discussion the Mud Cat Stadiums and the futuristic ideas of what that would look like. What is the benefit of having this, almost like you said, a mini version of the same? What's the benefit of having both?
You're not gonna be able to utilize Five County Stadium for everything, right? And that's a much larger animal than what we're talking about here. That's a full-size, you know, professional baseball field size. This is gonna be more of that softball size, you can do kickball out there. I mean, you can have things going on year-round on a community level that you're not gonna have that at Five County. But also, you know, this is essentially in your downtown area and we have a lot of discussion about what a downtown park would include and look like. And I don't think it's gonna take away from a future downtown park that you're gonna wanna put in, but you're gonna have limited space. And so having a concert venue close to your downtown to support that economic development, have that gathering space, let it support events like Juneteenth. It's a great place for you to have, you know, the, a smaller community event that's still large, but not necessarily the right place for Five County Stadium.
Also think this would be beneficial regarding practices that we would have, whether it's parks and rec or the usage. I know a lot of citizens are asking for them to be able to have more field practices and whatnot so that this will give us more opportunity.
Between the, this plan and the next plan, we would be just about doubling our field space. So it would.
Something to keep in mind for Five County is we only own fifteen percent of that.
So this would give us more.
Give us more.
Regular basis.
Yeah.
We only guaranteed those five, I mean guaranteed five are possible options.
Very limited.
We can't have that five too as well. Okay.
That's why I asked that question so that they have an understanding.
Very important, yes. But again, as we go through these, just keep thinking about that slide that says in another five years or so, a population may go from thirteen to twenty-five thousand. So I believe when you talk about growth, people quickly go to traffic. That's a natural thing to go to. But a lot of people define quality of life by having access to active open spaces. And so as we grow, do we have enough places for people to go, play baseball, hang out with kids and families, Fourth of July, Thanksgiving? I think it's just a lot of stuff that could be accomplished right here.
I do have a concern about the community center addition. What's the square footage right now?
I believe it's about ten thousand.
So it's gonna go from ten thousand to forty thousand or it's gonna go from ten thousand to fifty thousand?
So it would be an addition and we'd be building, it would be, it would build up. So essentially what we're looking to do in the square footage of it, we're looking to add the ability for at least two basketball courts inside.
Okay. I, I'm not saying that I won't come around to this, but it makes me feel uncomfortable. I feel uncomfortable that the expansion, I mean, because right now the way this is drawn, we're getting approximately eighty car spaces for what we just spent five hundred and sixty thousand dollars on. Because this, this has the removal of the building that we just purchased and like that was not my understanding of how that property was gonna be utilized. I did not think that it was going to be made into parking.
I think, I mean, you, you have, you'll have options. So if, if y'all say you don't want this to be the site of a future multipurpose rec facility, then we're gonna have to go find it somewhere else. If you wanna, we can just name the existing building. You say you want that, keep that as it is and you don't want this bigger multipurpose facility, we're just recognizing we're gonna have to go buy that land somewhere else. And while I understand that was an investment, you have, we have to look at it as all along, it was an expansion of the park. And, you know, if we view that, keeping that existing building, which is gonna take a lot of work, it is going to take substantial investment to get it to a point where it would be available for the public to use. And the value of that property to us is that it expanded the park and it connected the community center and community park and gave us control and the ability to expand and do a lot of these things. And so it's not just gaining eighty parking spaces, it's an exp, it's a multipurpose facility. That's what your investment was. But the other piece of this is that that multipurpose facility is a very large expense and it's going to be years down the road. And so we could work towards, you know, if you don't want it to be included in the plan, we could have it pulled out. If you want it included in the plan, then we can leave it there, but we can always, I mean, just with any process, you can always be open to other opportunities. And so if another opportunity to build a multipurpose recreation facility presents itself and we're not anywhere near building that yet, then that's something we would always consider whether it's in this plan or not. I mean, if you look at our adopted Parks and Rec master plan, there's a concept for community park that shows development in other areas. Like opportunities come and it changes how you view your plan.
I certainly would love to see the community center expanded, but like you just said, from the Parks and Rec master plan that we adopted with the understanding that all of these, that these are living documents. My understanding was that there were going to be like community center anchors in different parts of town so that it wasn't driving all of the recreation traffic to one location and that things would be a little bit more dispersed. If, that if this plan means that it's different, I need to wrap my head around it and I need to maybe see some iterations of what this expansion is gonna look like.
Yeah, so we would get into what it will look like more in that design phase where you get to the schematics of what it will look like. The master plan calls for, or recommends that the multipurpose facility be built at Five County Stadium. Those plans have changed, that process has changed. And so for me, we're looking at what can we make work with what we have, most realistic. The plan also, and that keeps us on the southern side, you know, southeastern side still. The plan does call for another community park size, community park facility on the northern end of town in years to come after you address your southern community park and community center.
Okay. This is just.
Yeah.
I wasn't expecting to see this.
I mean, I understand. It's, it is thinking about things completely different. But, you know, at the end of the day, we are just looking at how can we maximize what we have and get our citizens as much of what they need as possible.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you had square footage to your community center, it gives you a dead space to rent out. And so there's also positive impact on revenue generation.
So you are. It's gonna be, it's not gonna be a whole lot, but I don't disagree.
It's not a whole lot, but.
Certainly having something bigger.
Yes.
Would mean that future cons could potentially take place in our facility instead of having to take place once and then move somewhere else.
We have multiple users at the same facility at the same time rather than right now we have to turn some people back.
And it would also decrease us using other facilities, paying our Wake County folks to use their gyms and.
Right.
So that would definitely decrease that.
Yeah, because average cost is about twenty thousand, Sheila? What's the cost we're paying Wake County right now? I'm curious, you know what I mean?
Right.
It's about twenty thousand, right?
Twenty, twenty-four thousand is I believe the current quote assuming.
Gotcha.
But, but we are working hard to find alternative opportunities through partnership so we don't have that issue.
That's just, that's, that's just the gym nature.
Yes, sir.
Because it could have been thirty-three thousand.
Okay.
We got it down to twenty-four.
And that number, which would only go up.
Yeah.
At the rate we're going, right?
Yeah.
So we have to take that into consideration and I'm trying to get my hand wrapped around because Commissioner Baxter brought up a good point. So it's got my mind kinda all over the place, so help me will and then because the goal is to expand the community center that we have for multiple uses, right? We know we need it, especially we talk about the growth of the community, but at the same time wanting to have multiple facilities in different locations in different parts of town, right? Being that I, go ahead and throw it out there, my son, the other day was asking me, can he walk to the community center from where we live? The answer is no.
No?
Right. So, but at the same time, he brought up a valid point that I would like to be able to access somewhere where I can go and play basketball, indoor basketball. And then the frustration that my husband continues to remind me that seeing that his wife is a commissioner and not doing her job well is that he has limited access to the community centers to play with our son. And so what does that look like where we would have multiple facilities and options where we're not trying to feed anywhere between thirteen thousand and twenty-five thousand citizens in one facility? So what does this look like? So then at least in my last thought process, which is where? We are running out of land, obviously, very quickly, so the conversation I feel like it needs to happen more rapidly than later.
I don't disagree at all. We are trying to address some of, in the small community park or community building at Gil Street Park, there, the goal is to have some indoor court space. Would not necessarily be a full-size court, but it would be in a good amount of playing space there that would be indoor. So to me, that is going to be how you start dispersing. It is going to be very expensive to build community centers and especially a lot of them. And so being strategic in how they're placed, and that's why it was kind of one in the south, one in the north, maybe you do some smaller facilities in there. But being able to have, like right now, we literally have one court that serves a lot of purposes and it's not even a full-size basketball court. And you have to go through it to get to every room in that building. So that, we are, right now we're funneling almost fourteen thousand people and trying to balance all of those needs of, well, I wanna play basketball, I wanna play pickleball, I wanna walk, I wanna do dance classes, I want summer camp, I don't wanna be anywhere near the kids, I want bingo, I want bingo without kids. So it's a lot of different things that we're already trying to put through there. How, I would recommend, and I'd love to go with you sometime if you want to, Wake Forest has a new community center that they've built. And they have the same challenges that we have except they're fifteen years ahead of us, right? And they have built, we're proposing something maybe a little bit larger in court space because I see what our need is substantially. And we're starting a little bit behind only having the one not full-size court. And so that would be where if we can concentrate our facility, it will open up the doors and what we can serve. And think outside of the box, kind of like you mentioned, the Comic Cons or some of those larger events that even one basketball court wouldn't be big enough for. And so this one facility that we're proposing to have two basketball courts in would help us be able to do that. It's not gonna change your need to still build another facility in the future on the northern end of town or continue to do smaller community buildings as you grow, kind of like you have at Gil Street Park. So not everybody's gonna wanna go to the big facility for their needs. They might be able to get their needs met in walking distance. And so if I recall where you, where you live correctly, thinking I do, the Gil Street Park, this, this particular park, what we are working on now, so I'm gonna do a shameless plug, we've been working hard on the Wander app. And part of working on the Wander app for us, while it was intended to be more of a tourism trails thing, we are viewing it as how can you explore your community, your own community, from a walkable lens? And so we've been identifying to get from Old Bun, the subdivisions on Old Bun Road, how do we get you to downtown? If I can get you to downtown, I can get you to Gil Street Park, right? Because you're gonna go right past it to get there. And there's only the smallest gap past Gil Street Park that is missing, that little small missing link to get you from Old Bun Road subdivisions to downtown. And so when we make these improvements here, this would be a walkable, you know, piece for community members in that area.
Didn't you have this one up Sheila? I didn't see, I saw in the first, the other one bathrooms. Do we have bathrooms in this one too or is that taking you to the question?
That community building has bathrooms.
Check. It's on there. The smaller one, I didn't.
It's real small on this.
Wow.
It's real small. Can't really see that one.
It, it just, I think it says community building. It's the number one.
I know I saw it labeled on community park, but I didn't see it on yours.
Did you see number one over there on the left-hand side? Do you see that number one?
Yeah, I see the building.
That's the building.
Gotcha.
It's between the parking lots.
Yes, thank you.
Did I just make that up? That's, that's right. Number one.
I, so I have terrible vision. I have my glasses on, but I can't read that number.
One up there.
Number seven on this.
Gotcha.
Number seven.
Number seven's the security light there.
Well, that, he's looking at something different than we're looking at.
Unfortunately, I didn't have my PowerPoint up, so I was looking up here.
Yeah, but I was looking at the Gil Street Park one. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Number one would be that bill.
Number one would be that built five miles.
Community park.
Yes, sir.
So what we have talked about, just since we're talking about the bathrooms there, what we've talked about is having a bathrooms accessible from the outside as well as on the inside, but that it's, it can be moderated. So it's gonna be a staffed building, but that if you're at the park and you don't want to come all the way inside, they will be accessible. So there's some, a lot of good examples about how that can work successfully. And so that is something that we would be proposing when we go to design this facility.
Would it be possible to also look into having a concession stand of some sort in that area? I know if you're planning on having tournaments, that's something that a lot of people might really enjoy to have.
Yes. So the Zebulon Community Park Plan does include a proposal for concessions. Absolutely. Because that's where I, I don't think we, I went past the amphitheater when I was talking about what's over here. So I can, I can briefly go back over or finish what is proposed at Community Park. So there will be additional bathrooms over near the soccer fields, a smaller playground, because a lot of times which will see are these families, they have younger kids, they come to watch the other kids play ball and they need something to do. And so it's, it's a good idea to have a smaller playground in this area that can also service those participants. And we also were calling for a concession stand in this area with the amphitheater and the soccer fields.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
We're also calling for ba, pickleball courts, more parking, a dog park. And we'll get our second entrance into and exit out of the park, which
That's real awesome.
Will be incredible to have for that park. At the cul-de-sac.
What'd you say?
Connect on the other side of the church down there.
Yeah. Do we own that property that?
So that mean, okay, where do, those forty-eight townhomes are going, you can just connect right in there, is that what I'm trying to understand?
That property is at the end of that cul-de-sac, so yes.
Yeah. Gotcha. Thank you.
Absolutely. So that leads us, in order to do this, have to move some baseball fields. And so where do those go? We have options. But we really got, when we were looking at Gil Street Park, we were really looking at how do we leverage being so close to these two schools? Is there opportunity for joint use agreement between both Eastwick Academy and Zebulon Middle School? And we really kept being drawn to this undeveloped area at Eastwick Academy. And what could we fit there? Could we fit four baseball fields there? And it turns out we can. And we started having conversations with Eastwick Academy just to understand what their needs were. Do they have needs? And they, they do. They need home fields. They don't have home fields to play on here. And so they've been playing in Pilot and some other communities to meet all of their needs. And so this would allow us to be able to provide those home fields for them. But we also are home fields to several academies or homeschool programs and other leagues. And so we would still be able to be these home fields for those teams. We would be able to serve our own programs. We would be able to consolidate, and it would make the management of our baseball program a lot better. But also there are multiple tournaments that utilize the fields that we currently have. And they're always telling us on my every date that you have and as many fields as you have. And they really like coming to Zebulon. It gets them out of the hustle and bustle of, you know, the Rocky Mount, Wilson, Rocky Mount, I mean, Rocky Mount, Wilson and Raleigh areas. And they just really enjoy playing in Zebulon. And I love hearing that we get complimented on the quality of our facilities quite often in that they really would love an opportunity to play more. So this fit surprisingly very well. We've had great conversations with Eastwick Academy about the possibility of a baseball softball complex. And so you can also, both of these projects that we've talked about, really all three projects can be phased in. So you're gonna see huge price tags for all of this, but you don't have to do it all at one time, right? So we just plan for it. And I think the other thing for us to remember is that we're not gonna have to do it alone or eat it in the general fund, right? So we have the recreation impact fee that, if you look at our master plan, it was never intended to be a sole source for the development of our park system. But there's lots of opportunities. And so before I go through those, I'm gonna hit back on what our capital improvement plan is and what it's not. So the capital improvement plan will need to be updated. So unfortunately, we didn't get to do Parks and Rec, like a true capital improvement plan with the budget process this past year. And so we really need to update that mid-year if we are going to be serious about being competitive. I think it, it will demonstrate that we've done our due diligence. We recognize what things will cost in the years to come. So I will, I have drafted it for you and we'll, we'll share that with you here in a few minutes. I don't want you to get sticker shot because I did this morning. We have, like, we have been putting the plane together in the last couple of weeks as we were flying because I referenced the Wake County grant, and we want to be able to leverage thirty, third-party funds. But we also want to be thorough. And so we have been coming through estimates and phases and just how to plan that out in the years to come for you. So I have a draft. Some numbers may change because we're, we're looking at, you know, how things can best fall out over the years to come. And, but I can give you a nice starting point for us to look at. The other thing to consider is that a capital improvement plan in and of itself is not allocation of funds. So it's just a plan. And we will be able to revisit it every year with the budget process. And so if you don't have the funds ready to move forward, then they just get moved out a year. And you have to reevaluate that. So just because you adopt a capital improvement plan does not mean that you automatically allocated funds. You'll still have to do that and take that action. Let's see. All right. Here's where I'm gonna talk about the funding streams. And so you do have the recreation impact fee where you collect twenty-five hundred dollars for every multifamily home, three thousand for every single-family home. And you currently, in this year's budget, there's one point four million remaining in the allocated land acquisition budget that I will recommend that we reallocate it if we're going to go after this grant with Wake County to the Zebulon Community Park project. You also have four point two million dollars unallocated. So that puts you at five point six million dollars of recreation impact fee that we can use towards some of these plans that we're proposing and the development of these new amenities for our growing community. So we're not expecting those funds to pay for everything. They will run out quick because building parks is not cheap, just like anything else. You do have general fund that will be able to help support some of these projects. Grants, we are constantly looking for grant opportunities. We cannot go after grant opportunities and third-party partners without plans. We aren't competitive if we don't have those plans. And so that's where you'll see the Gil Street Park master plan, the community park master plan. And we're also gonna work on a, a plan as we move forward with the conversations with Eastwick Academy. It is not a surprise that in order to do all of these projects, it's a hefty price tag in that if the community, this is what the community's told us they wanted, and that if the community really wants it, they're gonna have to help fund it. And a way to do that is bond considerations. So if you look at our mass, at our master plan, it recognized that a large amount of these projects were gonna have to be funded through a bond initiative. And so that's the community's opportunity to, you know, yes, I want this and yes, I'm willing to pay for it, okay? So it, that is something that we'll have to have conversation about. It's not a tonight conversation, but it's coming. There is opportunity for third-party investment. So there are situations where maybe there is a very organized league that has funding streams that they could come in and say, I'm gonna pay, I will pay X amount of money, invest X amount of money in the development of this field. And then they'd be able to have rights to use that field. Or you can sell naming rights to certain things. Or there are banks that have funded picnic shelters or playgrounds and things like that. So there are third-party investment opportunities that we should be seeking. And the last point I'm gonna make is that we probably are in a place with everything that is needed and how things are moving in our community and how fast we're growing that we really should consider starting a nonprofit for Parks and Recreation. And so you're essentially creating a, like a fundraising committee that they can go out there and they can really work to help build up a fund to help build these amenities and work those relationships in the community.
There's a model for that, Atlanta Belt Line.
What's that?
Belt Line. So the Atlanta Belt Line is a twenty-two mile loop around Atlanta, around downtown Atlanta, old rail corridor that's no longer in use. So some time ago, they decided they were going to invest in it. Then they also formed an Atlanta Belt Line Foundation, which is a nonprofit.
You're saying Belt Line?
Belt Line, yes. Atlanta Belt Line Foundation. What the foundation is a nonprofit, it allows people want to gift. You can't gift government, but you can gift nonprofit. Atlanta has had people donate twenty-five million dollars to the foundation, thirty million dollars or even in their will.
And you have all of their contact information.
Yeah, I'm sure we should be reaching out to them. Yeah. So a lot of communities are moving in that direction because this government fund, they can only do so much.
Yeah.
But nonprofits allow people to gift and to get some tax write-off.
I think that's a really good idea. I like that. I think Raleigh has the Oak, City of Oaks.
Also, they successfully raised funds through their nonprofit to help fund quite a few facilities at their newer park renovations. So they put in a nice new playground and facility, and a lot of that had substantial investment through their nonprofit.
That's the same frame that Dix Park used also in Raleigh because they did not get those investments through, 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 through the community. A lot of those was private foundations.
All right. Well, chip chop chip. Let's get that up.
You got a lot of work to do.
I'm giving myself a lot of work.
Incorporation. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, if y'all do want us to start working on that, we'll be happy to, to start working with the management team and the attorney to pull that information together.
I think we have Hoover's going to get that started. I mean, it sounds like I'm looking at the little plans for the, that thing connected twenty-two mile, but it's twenty-two miles connected forty-five communities. It's pretty big. And I'm like, it's big. Okay. I like that a lot.
Yeah, I worked on that project some years ago.
Oh, okay. That's why.
Has all the donors' information.
Get on the same page. Doing his own plug right there.
In the meantime.
While we're here.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, you're gonna head up the foundation too? Oh, God. Great.
So, so what would you need to, from us, Sheila, to start that process?
Do it.
I feel at this point, we've got direction from y'all that we can start working on it. We'll bring you back the information you need to, whatever those next steps are.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Absolutely. This is where I'll let you know what's going on with the Wake County Hospitality Tax Funds. So they issued a request for proposals on September eighth. The proposal is due on November sixth. So your November third meeting, there's some big decisions coming your way. They have eight million dollars available.
I'll take it. Now you don't even have to come back before us. Just go ahead and accept those funds.
We can ask for up to five point five million. And just historically looking at things that have been funded in past projects and, you know, conversations that we've had at the staff level with Wake County, I think three and a half-ish is more of the magic number of, you see that a lot. I mean, if we need that, I would say apply. I mean, if you can't build it without that five point five, then that's what you need to ask for. But they're not looking to be the primary, primary investor in the project. So they do not want their match to be more than forty-nine percent. It's, they've gotta be the smaller portion of it.
Just like with the fire station.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And so we are diligent. When I said, we've been burning all the candles, trying to make it all work and pull it all together for y'all. And I will get y'all as much information as soon as I can in the next couple of days, hopefully tomorrow. That's my goal, where you can see what our responsibility would be. The good news is, I think, if we focus first on, based on what this grant needs, because they're looking for things that are gonna bring in tourism, economic impact. So that's where the soccer fields being our first phase and our primary focus and that entrance and exit into the park, just that infrastructure support of community park being our first phase. And in our first phase of a baseball complex being the two fields that we are going to need to relocate, that is amenable. And I think that we would be able to, between this grant, between wreck impact fee, maybe some investment over the next two years from the boards or from general fund, that we should be able to go after it. So I don't think it's unreasonable.
Listen, we have the redevelopment of this stadium. That's going, that's going to be bringing in hotels and everything else. So I mean, we got this. We got this because like people are gonna like, oh, we're coming to the stadium and we're spending the night, but our kids want to get out and run around. Well, they're gonna run around at Community Park.
I, I do believe we're gonna have one of the best parks in the area when it's all said and done. I've heard we want to be, we want our own Nightdale Station so many times in the last six months. And I love Nightdale Station, but.
We want Nightdale Station Park here in Zebulon. I want it better.
I was about to say, we want better.
And that's, and that's really what we're pulling together. I love Nightdale Station, but I don't find any fault with anything they've done, but I really think that we have something beautiful with Community Park and that this plan's coming together in a way that will be unique to us and will make people want to spend time there. So.
Good deal. Thank you, Sheila.
Yep. So I went through that. It's not lost on me that there will be operating expenses and considerations. And so anytime that you build new amenities and you grow, these things come with it. And so I just want to put it in front of you that we know that there will be operation as we, you know, proceed. But with the Wake County Grant, we recognize we're gonna account for that in our application, put forward an operations plan. And so our next steps would be park plan adoption, joint use agreement, capital improvement plan update, reallocation of funds and grant submission. We do not have to have the joint use agreement anytime soon, right? We've got plenty of time to walk through that process. We're going to do our due diligence. We are going to work with them to make sure that we protect our resources and our investment. We also want it, like any partnership, it has to work for both sides. And that we put forward something that is going to be really enjoyed by the community, and it's gonna meet a lot of needs. So.
I would say also, Dave, they've actually worked very well with us.
They have.
In terms of what went into that letter of intent, they have a skin in the game. It's like we do to release, do our due diligence to study what's possible there. So we're still gonna come back to you after that period is over.
Awesome. Well, a lot of work.
It's been a lot. Three park plans and a grant amongst Wander and land acquisition, all of it. It's, it's been a lot. We have great.
Yeah.
For.
For support for the grant submission.
Yes.
So that would just be the, like, the matching grants if it were to come through. And that would be if we were to take the five point six, or five, and, and then we're going after.
And that would be, if we were to take the five point six, or five, and, and then we're, we're going after three point five, that'll bring us up to about nine point one million dollars? Am I doing the math right? Okay. That we would have then to, like, get the ball rolling. That would what, like, get?
I think it's around the ballpark of what we really need to get the soccer fields, the basic infrastructure and at least two baseball fields moving. So, well.
So the collaboration with the East Wake, uh, Academy also, I mean, it's, I don't know. I think this is the first time we've even considered any joint effort with them as far as the community is concerned.
I have heard some buzz with some of the people. I think they, there's, uh, the parents received email or something about that collaboration already.
Oh, yes, they've already received it. They are freaking excited.
I got a couple of calls like, hey, you guys are really doing it. It's like, okay, we're going to talk.
They, they're, they're running out of space, so.
We've had positive feedback, so thank you all so much.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
The questions, comments from the board? Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, meeting adjourned.